Go.
Oh, yeah. All right, I will call to order the June 23, 2015 meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board. And just as a reminder, the meeting is being video recorded. Is there anybody here to speak to something that is not on the agenda? All right. A couple sets of minutes to approve. May 12 minutes, which it looks like Nisha and Jim Zarvis are the only three that were present for that one. Do you guys have a chance to look at them?
I did. I have no modifications that I want to make. I motion to approve the May 12 minutes.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Jim abstained. Moving on to the May 26 minutes.
I don't want to modify that. I actually eyed. I just did it really softly.
Okay. The May 26 meetings, James, Jim, and Libby present for those. Do you guys have a chance to look at them?
Jim had a modification or two in that one, and I think Jess made, right?
They're already made.
They're already made.
Yeah, I believe I sent out a revised version.
So I motion to approve the revised version of the May 26 minutes.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do better than that.
And Chat and I abstained. All right. All right, on to new business. Special permit application for 51 Brook Street. Want to come on up?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can I stand? Is that easier to do?
Even stand or sit, whatever's...
Hey, everyone. Good evening. My name is Ellen Fryman. I'm with the law firm of Shet Swartz and Fenton, 1441 Main Street in Springfield, and I represent Verizon Wireless. And we are here this evening to request the issuance of a special permit to permit the construction of a cell tower monopole at 51 Brooks Road. And with me tonight, we have our Verizon Wireless team. Elizabeth Jamison is regulatory manager for Verizon Wireless. Alex Restrepo is the radio frequency engineer with Verizon Wireless.
I can't tell who, so would you please raise your hand when you think you...
Tim Coyle, also a radio frequency engineer with Verizon Wireless. Doug Roberts is with Hudson Design. He's an architect. And Mike Libertine is with All Points Technology and is our environmental consultant. So each one of them will have opportunity to address the board and explain their aspect of what they did with working on the tower. I'll give you a little background. We have been looking for a location in the section of town for a long time. And if you recall, there's a overlay map which allows, it has specific parcels where we can put up a cell tower. And in this area of town, there are no parcels. So we did go before the zoning board of appeals requested a variance and to allow a tower to go on that part, on our subject parcel, and that was granted. At that time, we also asked for two additional variances. One is that you have in your ordinance that towers cannot be closer than one mile apart. And because of towers that are on Mount Tom, as the quote lies, they are slightly within a mile. And so we requested and received a variance to permit this tower at this location slightly within a mile. And also there's a regulation that says you can't be within more than, closer than 150 feet through a slope, which is 5% grade or greater. And we are. So and the ZPA granted a variance for that regulation. So otherwise, we are in compliance with all of the regulations set forth in your telecommunications ordinance. And as we will explain tonight, there is a need for coverage in this area. And we think we found a location that is very suitable and that it's, the visual impact is really negligible. You can barely see it. Per year regulations, we flew a balloon. And we had a couple people come out just because they happened to be biking by because it was the day of the festival last weekend. And so otherwise, it was pretty quiet out there. And it was a beautiful day. And so that worked out well. We were fortunate. And I will have, first Doug will go over the plans and give you a little background and little information regarding the layout and the site. And then we'll talk about the coverage. And then we also, you know, any questions that you have. We submitted photo simulations that you see. And I think, you know, pretty comprehensive package of information. So then we'll allow for questions to be brought.
This isn't a location where everybody can see.
Sure.
Thank you. Again, my name's Doug Roberts. I'm an architect at Hudson Design Group in Rockendover, Mass. I'd just walk through the project and then I'd like to address some comments we received. Basically, the site was located right along the gravel road. We call it so-called Brook Street. And there's an easement through here where the power lines are. So we're kind of sandwiched in between that. We are 133 feet from the property line, which is 110, slightly more than 110% of the tower height from that property line to meet that regulation. We have some considerable distances. We're 202 feet from the soccer field property line with some additional 75 to 100 feet of wooded area beyond the property line before the fields actually start. So it's not that the fields are right at that point, too. We are 133 feet from this property line. And as Ellen said, we are within 61 feet of this slope greater than 5%, which we've got a variance for. Our utilities are going to come underground along this easement area. There's also an access drive, too, from the pole located at this position here. We only require electric and telephone, which will be fiber. So it'll be pretty, you know, non-intrusive, no overhead lines. The compound's laid out slightly different. We did set the tower to the rear of the site so that we could keep the clearances with that 110% of the tower, but also kind of give it the buffer, not push it to a part where we ended up moving additional trees. The lease area is 100 by 100 with a 50 by 50 compound. We have a 12 and 1/2 foot by 26 foot shelter. We have a 120-foot monopole and antennas at 115-foot centerline. The tower will be designed to be expanded. We're going to design it so that it will be an extra location, one below at 105 feet and expandable, 20 feet taller for if any future carriers go per year regulation. All that would be within this compound. We have a meter center with telecub. It'll be pretty much just small, unintrusive installation after we get there. We've planted arborvitaries to sort of screen it from, you know, the immediate view as you walk down the street on the gravel road because that does get used. The generator itself has a backup generator. We're proposing a diesel generator. It's a 132-gallon belly tank, which is a double wall tank. And it's also monitored by the MITSU, a mobile telephone switching station, as to, you know, when it's exercised, when it goes off. They're constantly monitoring this for leak detection. The shelter itself actually has tertiary storage inside it so that the actual door itself is six inches above the adjacent door. So if something did inadvertently spill, it would really be contained within that shelter. Really, I don't have a whole lot more to talk about on the site.
Compound is fenced in?
I'm sorry, yes. Thank you. Very good point. Yes, eight-foot fence with a bar on top. That would be security fence. We aren't proposing any gate or anything because the road is itself right here. And it's used regularly by your public works department. Thank you.
So no gate at the end of the road, but a gate when you enter the compound?
Yes, it'll be, the chain link fence, of course, will have a gate.
Right, right, okay.
So it'll be secure.
Did you say it's not going to be 120 feet to start, and then it'll be extendable to 120 feet?
No, it will be.
It will be, but you have an option to put more...
Yeah, your regulations say that it needs to be expandable. So we will order one that's expandable.
Yeah, the foundation will be designed as such.
Okay.
How much higher would you go if you're at 120?
We wouldn't go, we wouldn't need to.
We don't, yeah, it's like AT&T or T-Mobile came in and said they wanted to increase the height. They'd have to come back here, get a special permit. And they would, the minimum they would, one is 10 feet above ours.
Yeah, I was just going to say, there should be a minimum requirement.
There is in the regulations. I think there's a height requirement for the entire structure.
It's 20 feet for each additional provider up to a maximum of 190 feet.
I did want to make two slight corrections on our application. And then I'd like to comment on the narrative. We talked about the antennas being at 120 feet. We just thought the tower's 120, the antennas are at 115 foot.
Okay.
That was one. And it also says that we have a standard stainless steel tower. I mean, it would be galvanized. You don't think the neighbors want to pay for that?
A little shiny, too.
So that's kind of my presentation. I can answer any questions. I would like to go over comments that we did receive from the town at this time, if there's no question.
That was going to be my question, but do you guys have anything else I didn't want to hear about now?
Let's hear the comments.
Yeah, that'd be great.
No, I'd rather hear what...
Guess I'll, we received, I'll go in order of lay hierarchy. And then one was the fire department comments. There was concern about the auxiliary fuel system. And again, that's in a contained room inside the shelter. It's a double wall belly tank. It has many, many bells and whistles. Verizon is obviously very, very concerned. And again, you know, it'll be a little sulfur diesel fuel. It's a very quiet diesel engine. It only exercises approximately one half hour per week, usually midday on a Tuesday. Can be set to do it at different times if there's a reason why, one minute at that date.
And the worst scenario, if something was to happen inside, say a small fire or something, is there extinguishers or...
There's fire extinguishers. There's not a fire suppression system within the building because, again, it's a utility building. It's way outside of any area that one would be working within, you know, or living next to, like a house or something.
There's a remote sensor system between, is that right?
Yes. Yeah, they, they can tell you that.
Yeah.
How many gallons, how many days.
And when, when the generator is in operation, is there noise or exhaust or anything like that that's noticeable?
There is two air conditioning units. Again, these are two and a half, three-ton units. They're lead-lagged, so they both wouldn't run simultaneously. They're designed so that one runs, then the other runs, so that, you know, there's always sort of that belt suspender approach to air conditioning. And it would be like a residential, you know, outside condensing unit.
Okay.
It's very, you know, minor in noise output.
Okay.
Yeah, the fire department had comments about the fuel tank. If we address that.
You said something about may require an annual permit?
Yeah, and if there is, we'll make that application for that permit. That's not uncommon. I think sometimes they just, if it reaches a certain size, they don't know around town exactly where they are.
Where they are, sure.
But again, it's actually, you know, less than half the size of what we would all have in our houses, a 275-gallon oil tank. So it's driven minor. Border Health had some R F questions, which I will refer to Verizon's R F engineer. The Conservation Commission didn't really have any comments. We did have a Public Works, Public Works comment. And we're certainly well aware that this road is used by Public Works to, you know, monitor your wells and their access and concerns. And some of their comments were, you know, after, we certainly won't impede anyone running on this road and walk. That's an agreement that the town has agreed with the landlords of those two parcels. There was a concern about, you know, where that pipe is, if it's working here. And we'll, we'll work with the town locating that, as well as we'll have a private utility company locate that as well on the drawings. We'll be outside that. We'll make sure that, you know, we might have to adjust our driveway a little bit just to stay clear. And they requested it, and that still certainly be done when it's completed. So, no, we haven't...
Okay, so no problems with their requests in that regard?
Yeah. If we had known exactly where it was, we would have...
We could avoid that at the outset, sure.
Yeah, but we will work with them on.
Okay.
I believe that's the only comments and questions we had from them. The tower, of course, would be galvanized. Meet Massachusetts Building Code 222G at this time.
You had someone to talk about the R F?
Oh, yes.
What's up? Want to get your plots? Why not?
So to, I guess, address the concern of the R F emissions.
What's your name again?
Oh, sorry. My name's Alejandro Restrepo. Alex, I think, is Ellen, you know, introduced us there.
On a royal basis.
Sorry.
Royal friends.
So I'll get to these, I guess, in a minute. But to address the concern, I think, of the R F emissions, you know, we run our, we'll say our, R F emissions tests based on FCC standards. So it's really the highest amount of power that the site can put out. And we comply with the FCC standards. I think there was some comments that if, if the board sees that, you know, you would like to see a third party come in to address that, to validate these tests, we can, we can do so going forward.
Yeah, we would request that that would be a post-test so that, because we have to comply with the license and we have to, and, you know, it's a worst-case basis on the power density calculation that we provided, which shows that at full power, the worst scenario, what the percentage would be of our allowed power, which was below 50%. So if you wanted a test, it would be, you know, after the tower was operational, we could do tests from different locations and then measure and show that you, and submit a result showing that we comply with our, with the license and would show what the levels are and that they are within the levels required by FCC.
And typically, you know, they're calculated based on the antenna pointing straight at the ground, full power, which we don't run, you know, full power with all our frequencies. So the antennas aren't pointed straight at the ground, you know, where some days will love it. So, you know, as Ellen said, you know, throughout the compound itself, you know, closest maybe to soccer fields or something to that effect, we could measure real time and show that we comply with, with those requirements. All right, just to give you an idea, Tim has a little bit more information here. He's one of, one of the engineers that actually helped design this a few years back.
So, Tim Coyle. And as Alex said, you know, there's been a coverage hole in East Hampton for quite some time, especially out Hendricks Plain, down Phelps Street in Plains, basically. Lots of, lots of customers are complaining. So this has been designed to address the majority of those customers as well as connect, consumers coming in and out of town on 141. So this is the coverage as it exists today. This is a good estimate on where the holes are. And you can see, it's in the neighborhoods that I was just describing.
The white means no coverage.
The white means no coverage. Yeah, as you, the Hendricks Street down here, Plain Street, Phelps is over there on the bottom. So this is the same frequency as proposed. And you can see, we're actually going to close a significant portion, bring a lot of coverage to some of the, some of the local residents. Some of the newer developments out in the area have nothing now. Our cell site that's currently at the Brassworks building, you just can't reach it.
What's that little white in the middle there? How's that getting away?
The little white in the middle? It's a dip in the terrain. That's the pond.
Other pond.
Right. So it's, the pond's going to be lower in elevation than our site, and it's also low in elevation from our other site. So that's one of the terrain challenges. And, you know, we have South Hampton right here. In the other town, there's the South Hampton cell site, but it's pointed right here, but you can't see it because the neighborhood is above, above the cell site. And that's, and the terrain challenges are quite tricky. And we feel, we feel that this site is a really good, a really good blend of the right amount of coverage with the least impact and visibility to the town. So this is our primary frequency that we're using. We have one more of our secondary frequency, which is a, it's a high frequency, so it doesn't propagate as far. And you can see, there's a little bit more of a hole. The other cell site doesn't even have this frequency yet. And you can see that before and after, it's, even our secondary frequency should help, help in the neighborhoods as well.
Can you bring up the one that's down below? Is that 4G as well, or all 72100?
72100, these are all, what it's going to look like afterwards, is our primary 4G frequency. And this is our secondary advanced frequency.
Thank you.
So it should really, really help a lot of, a lot of the residents. I myself have received numerous complaints and trouble tickets from these neighborhoods, so.
I have a question, if you'll allow, Chair.
Sure.
You've, as a group, done these before on taking it. When was the last time an R F test was requested? And have you ever failed one?
We have not been requested to do one that I can remember because someone asked me, Jay asked me if I had one. And I can't recall.
What about in the other states?
Trying to think about Connecticut. It's been quite some time. It's been quite some time. We have had special requests to do R F emissions. We have brought in outside experts to look at these. They've done pre-assessments on the, the R F emissions to show, all right, you know, on paper, this is what we're seeing compared to Verizon's to match up. And we have actually done some. I can't recall when. It's been quite some time for me in, in R F, so it could be, you know...
Is there, and other FCC regulations, does the FCC do oversight and testing of this stuff, or is it all sort of voluntary?
Well, you continually monitor.
Yes.
And you've never lost your license or been cited or any issue.
The FCC does stop by. It could be for any particular reasons. There's signs itself on cell sites. We go through this yearly internally. Signs, they'll look at antennas. They look at everything. So Verizon holds itself very accountable for these things because they, they can draw some, some large fines if we don't comply with the license. And we can lose our license based on not complying with, with the regulations.
And Verizon tracks it internally on an ongoing basis? Is that the idea, that you're sort of self-regulating to make sure you don't get?
Correct. So every time we do work to the site itself, so if, if we're going to increase our power on the site, we have to rerun our compliance, submit it to our regulatory team. They confirm that we are within FCC standards. Every time we change an antenna, anything we do to the site, we have to refile our documentation to the company so that if the FCC comes, we have it on file showing that we're compliant within standards. You know, as I said, I mean, fines can, you know, fines can be huge, we'll say. And losing the license that we've paid billions of dollars for is unacceptable. So obviously, we have to be very careful with it and make sure that we're compliant.
There is a tech person that comes out once a month to check the tower. They just come out and drive up and do an inspection. That's a short visit, but that, they do also check once a month.
And then as far as the power monitoring, all of our software, it's, it'll learn us if there's any power fluctuations as well. And the tech will go out immediately when we have the ability to shut down the site remotely.
Good.
I had one question.
Yeah?
So it says in the application that there, it wasn't feasible, obviously, to locate, to co-locate on an existing tower in East Hampton, but it wasn't clear to me why that was, whether it was a coverage terrain reason, or whether the tower sites are full, or whether it's more money than you wanted to pay for renting the tower space. Could you explain that, please?
Yeah, I can touch on that real quick. So, you know, you're familiar with Berry Street, and there's the water tank over in the area. So there's, there's another carrier on that. And we have one on Brassworks on Smokestone. Those are the only two carriers that were in town.
Let me just clarify, not Brassworks, because that's in Williamsburg. It's Millway.
Oh, they changed that, yeah.
I know who you're talking about.
Okay.
The R and V.
That's okay. I just wanted to clarify for the board so they knew what.
The R and V. So those are the two in the area, right?
They're very close to each other.
And they're very close. And we're already on one of them. And we're completely terrain limited from penetrating the residents where the customers are complaining, where they need the service, as well as coming in and out of the city due to the terrain challenges. We, we need to have a little bit of offload for the town as it's developing. We're getting more consumers in here. We're facing some capacity demands on this one cell site. So we need to help offload that as well. There's, there's those two up on the mountains. Those are, it's not feasible. We can't have the capacity that we need. We need to have multiple sectors. So we need to have coverage for the residents. We need to have coverage for commuters. We need to have coverage for the businesses in town. So that's why something outside of the town pointing in is kind of, wouldn't work for us.
Because it's, because there's not enough space, or because it's too expensive?
No, so I think, I think some of it could be...
Too far away.
You're serving a little further away, especially if you go up on the mountain. It becomes a SINAR challenge. SINAR being a signal to noise ratio. And our new services for 4G, one of them being voice over LTE, SINAR, or the noise that a site that very high provides, actually causes a lot of concerns and voice quality issues that we, obviously, Tim and I see daily trying to fix. So those are some of the concerns that we saw from, you know, possibly going up the mountain.
The ones up the mountain are more microwave shots. They're very narrow beams, much easier to control. So there's also the physical limitation that Alex is talking about.
Okay. I'd just like to add that it's always our preference to go on existing structures, building towers. It's very, you know, it's much more expensive to do a building, a tower. It takes a lot more time. So that is the first level of searches to find existing buildings and rooftops and towers. And then it's after that's exhausted and there's no other option, that's when it's the tower route.
If we were going to use any buildings in the area here, it wouldn't, it wouldn't obtain our coverage objectives to fixing the residential areas. There's just no buildings near the residence.
When do you, depending upon when the board accepts or whatever, when do you plan to start construction?
I guess, you know, I, I'll take this, I guess, from, from an R F requirement, you know, the, the R team. So I now run the R design team. I'm the manager. One of our goals and objectives, we look at, you know, where the need is. And this is one of, one of the sites that we look at as a need. We start to weigh, you know, what we have in queue. So we build a pipeline yearly for the following year, the year after that, in theory, for the, the next coming years. As the company starts to tell us, hey, you know, we have such X amount of funding, we start to go through that list of what we have in mind. A site like this could, could make it in 2016. It could be 2017, the year that we, we actually build it. So I couldn't, I couldn't give you a...
Well, I was just bringing up that the city engineer, the day or whenever you start has to be notified because you're going to be running underground pipelines and that so they don't conflict with what we have already in the ground. So that has to be...
Yeah, so our, our construction folks would, would go ahead and, you know, pull the bill, necessary building permits. They would notify, you know, the necessary parties as we start that construction. So the town would know the day we're about to put the shovel on the ground, obviously, well ahead of time. But they would know the date that we're going to...
We work closely with the town. I also would notify fire police if any, if there's county antennas that they want to install on the tower. We give them rent-free, you know, use of the tower. And if they have antennas, we would install them at the time that we erect them. So that, we have that cooperation in every place.
No, I was just saying, I know that there was a letter that came out that...
Yep.
Usually that, it's the town engineer, usually, whether it's this project or other project, like to be notified when you'd be starting.
You can make that a condition of the permit. We'll absolutely do that.
More than Michael.
Getting back to the RF stuff, I know in our bio, there's a requirement of an annual inspection and maintenance report to the zoning enforcement officer. Would that include sort of your regular RF stuff typically or not?
I couldn't tell you if that's something we've provided, you know, to, to other municipalities. I mean...
But if it's something we wanted, it's something that you guys are tracking, so we could do that. Do you guys have any other questions? Do you guys have any other questions? There's a couple other issues here. One of them that constantly gives me a struggle is the performance guarantees, just because we're required to have some, or it's optional to have others. And it's, it's hard to determine what the amount should be for us, not knowing the cost of the projects. There's supposed to be insurance, I mean, this says it shall be enforced, insurance on reasonable amount. The expense of after one year of damage from the structure and other site liabilities. So, I mean, I guess that's an insurance policy that someone would have to determine the value. There's also, we can demand an initial bond for annual maintenance to the access road to the site and the tower. We can require a performance guarantee to ensure the telecommunications facilities, which have not been used for one year, are removed. And, so, I mean, I think those are things that might make sense in this situation personally, but I don't know. I mean, do you guys have experience with that sort of stuff?
Yeah, we furnish bonds. It's not unusual to have a provision like that in your regulations. And, and we, actually Doug gives us the estimate of what the amount is, and we send that to you. We give you the estimate and the bond, and say, based on the, this estimate, that's why we, you know, that's just the amount of the bond that we're furnishing.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
We would need to know.
My, my, well, yeah, but my concern too would be to have it, you know, verified somehow as well. But maybe it's something that we can get that from you guys and just continue this on that issue. I mean, I think it makes sense for the insurance and the bond for maintenance and the performance guarantee in case it's not used to take it down personally, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
I concur, I agree.
It's difficult to track that number.
Right, so I mean, I think we may need to request that from you guys and.
Can that be a condition that we, before we do anything, that we come back and with?
Well, we would have to, I mean.
In other decisions regarding performance guarantees, they don't necessarily always have a number associated with them. I'm thinking more of the subdivisions that have performance guarantee requirements. It will just say that the applicant is furnished. Right, and there's some language about amount agreeable to parties, but.
So we could stipulate the three different.
Yeah.
But then, some of the other examples that I sent you today had very specific amounts of them.
Right.
So.
But I suppose we could do that as sort of a conditional, and then we would have the ability to approve that amount after the fact.
Well, I mean, you could, the city could hold on not granting a building permit until.
Right.
Until we've furnished you with the letter, and then you've agreed to the amount, and we've furnished you with the bond.
Right.
And most of the time, we supply like a means guide.
Right.
You know, a cost estimate of the removal. Many times we'll submit that to the town engineer. Ask him for any kind of comments, questions he might have, and then once everyone's happy, then.
Yeah, and we might not know until we order the, the tower, what the, all the costs will be, until we fill out the building permit application, so it would be a.
So it might make sense to make it, okay.
I have to sign off on the building permit before it gets granted. So I would probably hold off on my signature, but that's.
That's how you would handle that.
My job is that I have to go through all of the conditions and make sure they're all met before I, I sign off on it. So I'm the gatekeeper kind of between.
Okay. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak on this?
I just, I live on Brook Street.
Can you go through your name just for the record?
Bob Star, 28 Brook Street.
Okay.
And I just can attest to the fact I have Verizon, it's our only phone. We don't have a landline, and we're constantly drop calls. It is a poor area, we really do need better signal, or maybe we need a different carrier, I don't know.
They're hoping to prevent that.
Certainly, it's something we need in that area.
Towers going up and down.
Okay. And actually, that reminds me of something. So we looked at the, the pictures, the, of the tower visibility. The, the base, the pad, and the building, those are all removed back on the property, right? They're screened by the trees, is that fair to say?
That's correct. I can show you the plan if you.
No, 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 that was my recollection, but I just wanted, okay.
We're really utilizing sort of that access road.
Yeah.
And we're, we're just clearing just enough to place that 50 by 50 fenced-in area, along with the arbor items.
Yeah, and behinding it within.
Even within the lot, okay. Anybody else have anything else? I think, I'll just make sure we went through our special permit stuff too. The traffic is really just gonna be the once a month individual coming out there, right? Disposal of sewage and refuse, there's, the only thing on site is the generator, right? So there's, there's nothing else. There's no issue of loading or parking. I think we've addressed all of this. Do you guys have any other questions or comments?
Well, so the reason for my question was that we've, in 7.24E, it says, "Special permits for new towers shall be issued only upon a finding by the planning board that existing or approved towers cannot adequately fulfill the applicant service requirements," or blah, blah, blah. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, we had the verbal, done verbally agreeing.
And we're also in sort of a strange area, because the variance that the zoning board simultaneously found that in the context of their variance, so I think it's good that we're doing it as well, but.
So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that provision.
Right.
You know. I sort of would like to see like engineering study that shows what this coverage would look like if it were located on Mount Tom, but I, I'm not, I don't have a strong feeling in that direction.
For the tower on Ferry Street, which is the one tower you're not on right now, right?
Yeah.
With the tower on Ferry Street, we're right next to it.
Alright, so, but why not be on it? Well, you're right next to it, you're saying.
We're literally on the top.
We're on the lower end.
And if, and if we were to push it any, any closer to the mountain, we wouldn't meet our coverage objective of the commuting roadway in and out of 141.
So that's, that's the catch really, right? Is you're trying to cover not only the residential area and the plains, but also hit 141 for commuters.
As people come in and out one tower, as well as to help offload some of the, some of the businesses up here, that they don't quite get the best service from the current tower. Uno's and, not Uno's, Nene's, and some of those ones up in the northern section, just due to the path loss through the train and the other buildings, this tower's gonna have a line of sight to help enhance those coverage as well.
Okay.
So it can, it can hit multiple.
You were asking for independent verification of that statement?
No, I just, you know, we have these coverage maps, and it would be interesting for me to see the coverage maps from existing tower possibilities to demonstrate, so that we have something that demonstrates that the coverage is not adequate. You know what I'm saying? Because we, we just sort of, they're just saying, yeah, it's not adequate, but we don't have a map that shows that, that's all.
The coverage that they're showing now, you wanna see a map? Doesn't cover?
I wanna see a, if, let's say they were to put their, their antennas on an existing tower in East Hampton, instead of constructing a new tower in a residential district.
Wouldn't get the same.
I would like to see what that coverage would theoretically look like, so that we can meet our burden of demonstrating that existing or approved towers cannot adequately fulfill their service requirements. Which is just a matter of like plugging it into your software and pulling up the thing.
I think you answered this before, but I just wanna reiterate. Besides the one on Ferry, which you're right next to, with the one that's over by the mill there, in the area you're talking about, are there any other towers that you could potentially?
No.
I mean, whether it works or not, are there any other towers?
That's always our first option. We always, we're always going to look for a co-location, that's what you're referring to. That's the first thing we're gonna exhaust, and that's what our site acts do. We give them a search ring, a mild ring, but they're gonna look throughout the whole town just to get, just to get a feel for what else is out there. And as far as in this area in East Hampton, there is no other towers that we're aware of.
Okay, I mean.
There's no other monopoles in East Hampton. The only, the only towers that I'm aware of are the one on Mill 180, the Ferry Street, which has come before this board several times. I believe there's one on the Old Town Hall, which is a different service provider, and that's it, as far as I know.
So the next people that come in, gonna want them on that tower?
They are gonna want them on that tower, that's, yes.
Which is why you're allowing for upgrades.
Right.
Considering that this poor gentleman is getting a lot of dropped calls where he is, why are you waiting so long to begin your construction?
So it all comes down to a financial, you know, aspect. So if, you know, a lot of these sites that we're proposing, you know, some, some will drag on for quite some time, based on different zoning requirements or what have you. Some of them, so we really can't plan to say, we're going to build this until we get an okay that we can build it. So once we get that okay that we can build it, then we look at what our, our financial, you know, what the company's giving us regionally to spend, right? So the company will, will give X, X dollars to each region and say, this is what you can spend in the coming year for new tower construction.
So it's, it's financial, and it predicates whether it's gonna be put up or not?
It's a financial. It's kind of a balancing act there with the financial, excuse me.
No, no.
It's your name again, I'm sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm Mike Lbertine.
Thank you.
It's a balancing act, because as Alex has indicated, if this tower were to be approved, it's, in all likelihood, it starts to move up the ladder. But there are other considerations, so they've got a big pool of towers that are in essentially the same where we are now. We're in the permitting phase. And some of those are gonna stretch probably into next year in the permitting phase. So in all likelihood, it's been our experience that, you know, if we get the approval, barring someone, you know, foreseeing circumstance, we're probably talking about getting a shovel in the ground, certainly within the next calendar year or so. I think that's a reasonable expectation.
Remind the board also that special permits are valid for two years. So once the special permit expires, then they would have to go through this entire process again, which I'm sure they don't want to.
Variance is a one year, so we're mindful of that.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely.
Anybody have any other questions?
No.
No.
I mean, the only things that I would.
We have three performance guarantee additions, addendums.
Well, there's an insurance, a bond, and a performance guarantee. Yeah. And I would just, I mean, one of the conditions is annual inspection and maintenance reports for the tower. And I think, it seemed like there was interest in RF readings, right? So I mean, I think it would make sense to explicitly have them report what they are finding. I mean, I don't, it doesn't seem like that's a hardship for them. If they keep the records, they're gonna have to report to us annually anyway. But I don't know, I mean, if you guys don't feel like that's a big issue.
I don't feel strongly about it.
Okay.
I won't flock it either.
Okay, that's fine, okay. All right, does somebody?
No, 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 I want you guys to clearly list out.
We're not there yet.
We're just talking.
Sometimes you're, sometimes you're. Confering right now, yeah.
I want clear.
Yeah, especially with the preponderance of items we've got on the list.
Does somebody like to make a motion?
I'm motion to approve, yeah.
You wanna look at the actual?
Now, you can't make a motion to approve unless you've got all the conditions.
I'm working on it.
Okay.
Just be patient.
No, I'm not gonna be patient. I want it done right, and it will get done right.
Right, I agree with it.
Tried to.
All right. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to confer, so that you get this done right first.
Thank you.
I'd like you to ignore everything that's being said here until we say that you need to pay attention. Okay?
All you have to do is say that these are the, these are the listing, the conditions.
We have damage from the structure and other site liabilities. This is an insurance, annual proof of insurance.
Yeah.
But what are we requiring there? What's the language? We're saying we're requiring annual proof of insurance?
Of an amount, I mean, I guess, agree, I mean, who's gonna make that determination though? Is it gonna come to us?
City engineer typically reviews the performance guarantees. I don't know whether he has the capacity to do that or not in this instant. If it's based on the value of the structure, is that what the performance guarantee is just?
I think you're talking about insurance.
This is the insurance.
Insurance, we have, we have, we provide a certificate of insurance, and it's never been an issue how much we have.
That'll determine any possible damage insured.
So we can, we can request, I mean, the insurer is gonna be the one that's gonna really determine that, so.
They're gonna provide the proper.
We'll provide annual proof of insurance.
Right.
To who?
To.
To the planning board, to the city engineer, to the planning department, to who? Building inspector, who's it?
7.28 says planning board.
Planning board.
There it is, planning board. Thank you, let me, I appreciate that.
Annual proof shall be filed with the city clerk.
Wait, so.
It says.
It's in a reasonable amount determined and approved by the planning board.
I may have read it wrong. Let me take a step back.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to, the planning board has to determine and approve the amount, but annual proof of insurance gets filed with the city clerk.
So we're gonna have to see the first.
Send it to the planning board, so that we can see the amount. So this condition is that you will provide, we're not, it's not legal yet, don't get antsy. This condition is that you will provide annual proof of insurance to the planning board, who will then file it with the city clerk. Does that mean we go through an approval process?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to approve the amount.
I guess we would have to.
And that's what the bylaw requires us to do.
Upon approving their amount.
I don't think we have to approve it annually.
No, we don't have to do it annually, but it's, I mean, the insurance is in a reasonable amount determined and approved by the planning board.
Yes.
With the city clerk, okay. All right, second item.
Don't worry, Jess.
We have the initial bond.
You're giving Jess a hard.
For annual maintenance.
Well, just, I mean, just so you're clear, that the applicant needs to know what the conditions are being set, so that if they disagree with anything, they have the ability to discuss that now. That's why I didn't want it as a form of a motion, just so you understand what I'm coming.
No, I, I understand. So are you suggesting in that too, that, that we should pick an amount in advance? Or you think it's okay that we?
I'm not talking about the amount, I'm just, why, all I wanna say is that the role of the board is to discuss the conditions, so that the applicant is aware of what is being conditioned, so that if they have an issue with anything, that can be discussed now, not, isn't in the form of a motion. That's all I'm getting.
So we require, this is, they're still discussion, require an initial bond for annual maintenance. How's that gonna work?
They get a, a bond.
They have to provide a bond.
And deliver it to us?
Yeah.
Mike, can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So is the amount of the bond, does that increase over time? So if the tower is there 20 years, is the value change over a 20-year period? Like, or is that, how does that work in terms of?
The only bond that I've, have provided is for removal and performance to, so that it's up, you know, completion. I'm not done on annual maintenance.
And that, and that might be something that would be more of a lattice tower or a guided tower, where, you know, you're inspecting, you're retentioning, you know, you know, re-hardwearing. You know, after so many years, they do end up being re-hardwared, and cables get done. This is a monopole, slip connection, it's kinda like what you see, you'll see 25 years later.
Yeah, well, it's talking about the access road to the site and the tower.
Right.
I mean, that one's not one of the mandatory ones. I mean, I don't know what people think about that.
In general, you know, the other one we have is a performance guarantee. You only want three of them, do you want the annual certification as well?
Well, that's just a requirement.
This is a requirement. So my personal feeling on it is that, given what's going on in the site, I think that we can let that one go, that's just my feeling.
The annual maintenance?
Annual maintenance.
I mean, I would assume that, since they're still gonna still be operating it in that scenario, they obviously have an incentive to keep it maintained.
We have that obligation under our lease.
Right, okay. What do you folks think about that? Makes sense?
Yeah.
I just take my word for it. Okay, so we're strike that. Okay, we have a performance guarantee to ensure the telecommunications facilities, which have not been used for one year, are removed.
Right, so that'll be a removal performance guarantee.
Removal performance guarantee. To whom, to us?
To the city, that would be to the city of East Hampton.
No, to just the city.
Just the city of East Hampton.
City of East Hampton. Okay. And then finally, we have the annual certification.
Yeah, that's, I think that's just a regular requirement.
So we don't have to add that, it's on, so we have two additional items here. And this is not officially yet, but I will be asking, in addition to the prime motion, that the applicant will provide annual proof of insurance to the planning board, who, upon approving, the amount will file, file it with the city clerk. And the applicant will provide a removal performance guarantee to the city of East Hampton.
In an amount to be determined by?
Well, also in an amount to be approved by the planning board, I guess. Or do we want the city engineer to do that one?
I would think that city engineer would probably be better suited to know.
Well, maybe it'd go through the planning board with a.
Comment?
Comment to the city engineer.
You know, the city.
I mean, the city engineer sooner or later will probably have to say.
See it one way or the other.
Yeah.
At least have to see it and say, I approve this amount or not. I would think.
The amount to be approved by whom, folks?
Planning board.
Approved by the planning board with a notation to the city engineer, I would guess.
Well, we can handle it.
Were there?
Oh, yeah, we can.
Yeah, were there any other, Chad, I think I remember at one point, you had a condition you wanted to add, was there anything else besides these two that Jesse has got here?
No, I think that.
Letty?
Have you been able to follow along with anything that we've been saying here? Does this make sense?
Yeah, I actually have.
Okay, so those are, and there's.
There was another condition.
There's also the conditions, well, there were several conditions from the city engineer regarding advanced notification.
The advanced notification and then the running of the, their lines and conjunctions with.
The as-built.
Yeah, and the as-built plans for the complete site.
Yeah.
Do you have those, so that I can add them in this? Can you read those off to me? One is?
Applicant will notify the, I guess it's the city engineer.
City engineer.
Prior to the start of work. And.
One second.
Yep. And that, any of the utility work provides sufficient clearance from the town's conduits and water pipes to provide to perform maintenance.
Okay, wait, wait, utility work will provide sufficient clearance?
From the town's conduit and water pipes. To allow maintenance.
The final request would be an as-built plan.
Right.
From the town's water pipes?
He refers to it as a conduit and a water pipe.
Conduit and water.
Because they're right in line after that.
And then to provide an accurate as-built plan of the complete site.
Can I add before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, I presume you get a C O for, right, so.
Certificate of occupancy.
So that's the, that's the T, that's what the city has, is that as-built plans should be furnished to the city before the.
Certificate of occupancy.
That occupancy is issued, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so to provide an accurate.
An accurate as-built plan of the complete site.
Of complete site.
Prior to the issuance.
Any comments on any other questions?
Prior to issuance.
Of a certificate of occupancy. And you folks said you had no problem with those requirements as well, right?
Good.
Anything else, anybody would like to discuss?
Something about wanting it provided by the surveyor at the record, I don't think we have to, we got so many other ones in there.
Did what?
That has to do with the as-built plans, Jeff.
Right, that goes in with the as-built.
Let's hope I get this right. I've got four stipulations in here so far. Do you want me to recap before we go forward? This is a recap, not an official thing. The first one is, the applicant will provide annual proof of insurance to the planning board, who upon approving, the amount will file it with the city clerk. That's number one. Number two, the applicant will provide removal performance guarantee to the city of East Hampton in an amount to be approved by the planning board. Number three, the applicant will notify the city engineer prior to the start of work. And the final one, number four, utility work will provide sufficient clearance from the town's conduit and water pipes to provide an accurate as-built plan of the complete.
Two different ones.
No. So and a conduit and water?
So the notification regarding city engineers in regards to the utility and the conduit and the water pipes, so those two.
Okay, wait, so the applicant will notify the city engineer prior to start of work?
Prior to the start of work in regards to utility conduit and water pipes.
Ah, I missed that. In regards to utility conduit and water pipes. Okay, almost fixed. Except for the fourth one.
And the last one is just provide an accurate as-built plan.
As-built.
Okay. So, the fourth one then is provide an accurate as-built plan, do I go of complete site prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy?
Yeah.
So that one is provide an accurate as-built plan of the complete site prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Sounds good.
We think we're ready?
Yeah, I think you can read it off.
Oh, God. Good luck to me, all right. I motion to approve the application for special permit for 51 Brook Street. The, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. The, I have it here, tower and site. With the following stipulations. First, the applicant will provide annual proof of insurance to the planning board, who upon approving the amount, will file it with the city clerk. Second, the applicant will provide a removal performance guarantee to the city of East Hampton in an amount to be approved by the planning board. And third, the applicant will notify the city engineer prior to the start of work in regards to utility conduit and water pipes. And fourth, the applicant will provide an accurate as-built plan of the complete site prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. I need a raise.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right.
Did you vote? You did vote, okay.
All right.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
All right.
We'll keep in touch and let you know how we're doing.
Stay careful, I'll let you hear though.
All right. Nobody wants to stick around for the rest of the day, I guess. Next up. Zoning map update. Folks, all have a chance to look at this?
Yeah. Very extensive.
So Jess, can you explain again what the process is of what the?
I'm just gonna close the door. So the zoning map update, so as I had previously mentioned, the zoning map has not been updated since 1990. It was such that there's no parcels affiliated with it, so, and since 1990 and 95 when the zoning update happened, there's been, I think it's 11 or 14 zoning amendments that have gone through the planning board and city council for specific parcels, and those have never been incorporated onto the map. So the first step is to incorporate all of those changes that have already happened onto the map so that the map is accurate. We don't provide to the public a copy of the zoning map because, I mean, we have the old one, but it's not accurate. So it's difficult when we're working with people in the community and they wanna find out what zone they're in. The assessors is not the official record of zoning for a parcel, the zoning map is. So it's really important that this document is up to date. Also, since the last zoning map update in 95, we've now gone to a digital GIS system, the online property assessment's available to the public, it's on the city's website, they have a zoning layer as part of that. We've been working with CAI technologies to redevelop the zoning map so that incorporates all of those changes that have gone through council since 95. And we've taken some time to address some, some boundary issues, such as, for example, on the R 40, between R 40 and R 80, that zoning district line really needs to be the center line of the brook, it wasn't represented as such on the old map. So it's things like tweaking, things like that, things that we know are wrong, we've gone ahead and fixed, but there are a lot of questions. There are discrepancies between various versions of the 1995 zoning map in my records that show boundary lines differently. There are streets that don't line up accurately, and so it's difficult to know what the zone is because the zone was coming a certain offset of the street, but the street is not lined up properly with the street across from it, so you don't know whether it's supposed to end at the street or continue on to, so there's a lot of questions. So in order to sort of clean this up, I would like to go through a formal public hearing process. I think it makes sense, given that there's too many parcels that there's questions on, and what I'm recommending that the board does is schedule a joint public hearing with the ordinance subcommittee, hash through this entire document, make some decisions as one unified body, and then put that forth for the city council adoption process and get this thing up to an accurate place.
Well, I second that.
And one of the things we talked about was giving notice to the actual affected property owners, right?
Correct, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to, you know, we can't, we can't notify every single individual in the city personally, it just is cost prohibitive to do that. So what I'd like to do is I'd get it out publicly through the press, I'd put it on our Facebook page, I'd get the word out there, but I'd like to personally notify those individuals where there's a discrepancy in the lines and make sure that they're notified that there is the zoning map and that their property could potentially be affected and have them make sure that they're here and present and hear that discussion, so.
What do you mean by personally? Do you mean the letter?
Well, I usually send postcards, so any special permit notification, we do it in a postcard form. And so send them a postcard, write the public hearing date, and just have them make sure. And then I keep a record of that in my files, so if there's any question saying, well, I was never notified that my property was gonna change, I can say, well, actually you were, you know, it came in the mail, and I'm sorry you didn't read your mail, but I only have so much responsibility that I can.
I think that's a crucial step, I'm a little nervous about possibly changing someone's zone without them, just 'cause they haven't read the paper or something like that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Still, though, I think this really does need to be done, and the effort that's been put into it so far, I think is great, it's very understandable, and I'm grateful for that.
Jamie's done the majority of the work on this, this has been her project, so.
Yeah, please.
So then we would schedule, like, we would go to the ordinance subcommittee?
I think we.
Is that who is?
Yeah, it would be the ordinance subcommittee, because it's part of the zoning ordinance, so. And I think there's a lot of business owners and property owners in the city that are, would be very interested in what's happening with this, but, so.
Okay.
So that's my recommendation, is to schedule that.
I think that makes sense, I don't think it makes sense for us to go through this now, rather than with the ordinance subcommittee.
No, who just duly getting happens. So you, it's a public hearing with the ordinance subcommittee?
Right, so this would have to get, so I think at a minimum, you need to look at this, and you need to give approval tonight, a motion and approve, to send it forward to city council, and then the public hearing really actually can't get scheduled until.
They approve?
Well, they send it, so it has to get received at city council, then it has to get bounced to ordinance subcommittee, and then from there, once they, once they start looking at it, then they kick it back to planning, and then they say they're ready for a public hearing, so.
So we're motioning to send it to city council, not for final approval, but for the next step?
No, to the next step, to basically kickstart it, and know that city council is meeting only once a month for the summer. So we send it to them, they're not gonna get it until Ju-, I think July, first week of July is their meeting. So the ordinance subcommittee wouldn't look at it till mid-July, you know, it could be September by the time this actually finally goes through.
But this is all internally initiated, right? So we don't have any deadlines or timing on it?
You don't have any.
I mean, the fact that we're not sitting on it for 20 years, it should probably get around that.
Exactly right.
But it's not like the next one, we have to have a hearing by August 8th?
Right, 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 right. So this one is really just kickstarting the process so that it's now in council's hands, and they can start looking at it, but.
I also have a sense that, just from all the other deliberations we've had, that having things like this fixed would impact a lot of future things we do. So I mean, there's a, there's some pressure for time there, you know, a little bit.
Yeah, oh, no, I just wanna make sure, I mean, we're talking about, it might not be till September, and with some of the things we do, we can't do that, you know, we gotta move quicker, so I just wanna confirm that that's where we are.
So the verbiage on moving it forward to kickstart it?
So I would draft a memo, this is what I typically do, so if something is initiated from the planning board, I send a memo that goes to council, I submit it to the city clerk, and I say, you know, the planning board had discussed at this date, meeting date, you know, moving this zoning amendment forward for your consideration, blah, blah, blah. I have some pretty boilerplate language that I use. I put the, you know, who voted, you know, the vote, is it 4-0, 5-0, whatever.
So it would be something along the lines of, I motion to push forward the proposed zoning amendments in a letter from the city planner to the city council.
You could just say put forth zoning amendments to city council.
All right, to city council, I strike the rest.
Unless there's anything in there you wanna discuss and talk about in that package? I mean, this is not a final package, so, you know, they.
No.
Understand that there's some.
I think it makes sense to wait until we're all together.
Yeah, we'll just work it, like we have this conversation.
No, wait until we're with ordinance.
Ordinance.
And talk to them about it.
Yep.
Okay, so, why should we give this a formal motion this time? Was that a formal motion?
I'm gonna redo it again, except I completely forgot it.
Motion to put forth zoning amendments to city council regarding the zoning map.
Yes, I motioned that.
Okay.
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay.
So 5-0?
5-0.
5-0.
All right. So next up is the zoning ordinance amendment for home occupations.
Right.
And this, this has to follow the same procedure, right? So this is gonna be a little tight to get.
Well, it's already been to council.
Oh, it has been to council, okay.
We're getting a kick, so there's a memo from the city clerk, right?
Yeah.
So now we schedule with the zoning.
Right, is that right?
Well, it's from the, request from the ZVA to amend the zoning ordinance, refer to the planning board for further review and action. Yeah.
So it would be?
Uh, oh, no, wait. There is a memo to the city council.
From the ZVA, correct?
Yes.
Following request from the zoning board of appeals to amend the zoning ordinance is hereby referred to the planning board for further review and action.
That's the first one, but then the next page is a memo from back in May from the city, from.
To the city council, from Jamie Webb.
On behalf of the ZVA.
Well, it says from the zoning board of appeals.
So is there a response from the city council?
Well, that doesn't look like they've looked at it yet.
I mean, that's my, I mean, since now we're talking about an August 8th deadline.
So.
So what's the August 8th deadline?
Well, I wonder if what you need to do is, all you need to do is to kick it to council. You need to vote to move it to council for consideration, it seems.
Which means we need to go, show up.
So it just goes to council?
Well, I mean, it depends, so this is another proposed, so this is another proposed revision to a zoning bylaw, dealing with home occupation, so we can, I mean, we can go through this now, or we can also do this with the ordinance subcommittee.
So is it the intention then that if we push this to city council again, they will push it back in the city?
Well, you, I mean, that's the process, so whoever initiates, whoever petitions for it has to go, it goes to, it can either, either come from the planning board, it always has to go through council. Council is the, is the, is the authority on this.
But so, even though they got that memo, they didn't...
I'm not sure, I don't know.
It wasn't a formal request from us?
I need to follow up.
It's difficult, because if the city council gets it, you know, and they're under the impression that we've vetted it, when we're thinking that it's gonna come back to us for a second, you know, I just wanna be cautious about that. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I think you could vet it and say that you have vetted it.
Right.
And then that it is what it is, and then they have their opportunity to comment, and you've already done your work on it. So, I mean, it could go either, I mean, I don't think you always have to... Because when you've done, when you've created stuff in the past, like, there was the, trying to think of stuff that came from the planning board. Dave Gardner, he had that stuff with the, what was it? The pre-existing non-conforming, there was that section there. So, like, that was initiated here, then it was sent to council, and then council came back, and there was a joint hearing, and you said, "Look, this is why we did it," and they said, "Yeah, okay, let's..." They vote to move it to council, so, you know.
Okay, did you guys all have a chance to look at this? Or look through it?
Yes. I can get you one after the meeting.
I think...
I'll need one too, Jess.
Okay.
I don't know. Did you get one?
I'm gonna.
I didn't print it out, but I have it on my phone.
Can I read the letter from Jamie Webb?
Oh, that's right, because I might...
That's okay.
My printer wasn't working.
I'm gonna read a piece of it that might jumpstart us on this a little bit. This is a letter from Jamie Webb to the city council summarizing the law. It says, "The zoning board of appeals seeks to amend the zoning ordinance as it relates to and regulates home occupations. The board has determined that the current ordinance does not function as intended and instead frustrates the economic growth of the city and its residents as it is overly restrictive and creates a permitting process that is too slow and bureaucratic. The board proposes a two-tiered performance-based permitting process that splits authority for permitting home occupations between the zoning enforcement officer and the zoning board of appeals, and that removes the lists of allowed and prohibited uses in favor of determining suitability on a case-by-case basis from the intensity of proposed use and potential impacts to the surrounding residential areas. The zoning enforcement officer will be given authority to permit home occupations that are not open to the public, do not increase traffic to the neighborhood, and do not have the potential to create nuisance issues for neighbors. The zoning board of appeals will have authority to permit all other home occupations."
So, I can tell you from having been on the zoning board, the way the bylaw is now is that basically anytime you wanna do anything really commercial in any way, even if it's like doing paperwork in your house that you're technically supposed to come and get a permit for.
A permit, yeah.
It's really dangerous, and it's money and time that people have to spend there. And it's, I mean, I think most people are probably doing those minor things without doing it, and so then you sort of get punished because you're the person who's following the bylaws to the letter. So, I mean, I think it's great. They've sort of differentiated in this between a major and a minor home occupation. Minor home occupation is when it's not open to the public and does not create a nuisance. And in that situation, it goes to, I guess, the building inspectors, the zoning enforcement officers, right? So, and they can administratively allow that if it meets those requirements, and otherwise it has to go to the ZBA for a full permit, so...
Conceptually, I completely agree. I think finding things like these that are a big inconvenience and yet really a minor thing in terms of the city, these are great when we can find these and fix them and improve systems overall.
Especially some of the minor things that are causing, you know, the backlog where somebody, like you said, just, I think, just to have paperwork done has to go through that process, and that could take who knows how long.
Right. So, does anybody have any issues at this point with the language that's in this draft, realizing that we can meet with ordinance and still tweak and favorite things? And also that it was drafted by the ZBA, who will be the board that's responsible for enforcing it?
Yeah. I have none and would like to motion to move it forward.
Second.
I don't think we need to be more specific than that.
Well, I need to check with Barbara tomorrow on what the steps is at council level, so if you make a motion to, to, I mean, I don't know whether it needs to be a fit of a public hearing or if we're gonna...
I promise we don't know where it's going.
Well, can we make a motion to take the next necessary steps to proceed to change the bylaw?
Sure.
We can do that.
Yeah, I motion to take the next, take the next necessary steps on the revised home occupation zoning ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's second, Jess?
Uh, Jeff. And no exceptions.
We could have checked.
I did the last one where you had.
Okay. We're working to it.
I think you might be up one.
All right, folks, so moving on, we have a request for a planning board opinion, 28 North Hampton Street, I have written in here.
ZBA, ZBA. Uh, planning board opinion on ZBA, yeah.
Request for our opinion?
Yes.
Which we just got here.
I haven't actually seen that.
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
No, it just came.
It's, I'll give you a quick summary. It's for a web design firm that wants to move into where TruBear was located.
Okay, so...
And what's the, is it a change of use?
Where TruBear was located, on North Hampton Street, right by the DPW yard.
It's a change of use, is that essentially what?
It's a change of use, so it's going to the ZBA because of its zone.
So, do we want to take any action or offer any opinion on this?
No, I think let them go.
Okay.
The usual response.
So, do we want a motion?
I motion to provide no comment.
No comment.
Yeah. All right, so, all right. Okay. We pass off to Jess on what was that?
You can strike that motion, that didn't happen.
Okay. So, administrative items, master plan implementation committee update. I was disappointed to miss this discussion topic last time. But I saw there was a lot going on.
I'm in the process of looking at the master plan and trying to organize how I'm going to proceed with contacting persons who should be responsible for the various...
Okay. So, we'll stay tuned for further updates.
So, stay tuned for, yeah.
Okay. And the last one is planning board decorum regarding how the board manages the public during public hearings, which I will confess is a difficult issue.
Well, I know I'm the newcomer, but I just wanted to propose that maybe we consider adopting a style more in line with how city council seems to handle public comment periods, which basically, you know, I think is a little bit more like a defined public speak period where everyone has an opportunity to speak once, and then, you know, the council sort of like continues with their own discussion. My concern is that I wanna make sure that we have enough space to have our own internal discussion during meetings without being continually interrupted. I understand that, you know, sometimes things can get heated, but I think it's important that we be able to...
Internally?
Yeah, well, that we be able to, like, keep the meeting going smoothly and that we be able to deliberate as the planning board when it's time to do that.
Yeah.
And...
I like the idea about putting people on a time limit. And when you say, "When we announce the time for public speak," you know, we could say, I sort of like a little bit of flexibility.
Yeah, I agree.
But, you know, if you anticipate if a big room or if it's a full room, we could just default to everyone's gonna have one minute and we'll have one...
Are you talking about the public speak at the beginning of the meeting or when the public comment on each application?
Each section of, I mean, every time there's a public speak opportunity, it's, there's one at the beginning and then for every public hearing, every piece. And I'm not even proposing a time limit. I think that's probably to our discretion, like you said, like if there's a really packed room, but I just feel like...
Well, sometimes you need to hear from someone twice. I mean, you just go back to them.
I mean, that's always the hard part, right?
People should, everyone should speak once, and then we could call on people if we need additional comment from them. But I don't, I don't think it's great to have people speaking like five, six, seven times
Yeah.
without really raising their hand and being acknowledged by the planning board.
Yeah, I think it's more the second part than the number. Like, for me, and it's always a tough issue where, I mean, this is their one chance to speak on an issue, right? And so, you never wanna be stopping them from talking, but we've also had chance at situations where it just goes on and where it's not on point, or we've had people come in after issues have been decided and try to talk. And so, I think that, and that probably largely falls on me as the chair or Jim, well, he's unfortunate enough to be there. But I think that that, that we can certainly do a better job with that.
Green. I'm glad you brought it up.
I mean, I come from an organizing background. I've organized a lot of public hearings, like, from the public perspective, so I know what that feels like. And I, you know, I think that preserving like a certain order and like calm tenor in the room as much as possible is really just helpful in everybody getting their, you know, their fair...
When you brought this up to put on the agenda, I think between you and Jessica, there were some really good comments that I wanna make sure get set again so that we hear them again. One of them was about where we have the meetings and the room upstairs create, not that we can always get it, but it creates, just in itself, like you said, a tenor, a feeling. It's a little bit different than this kind of closed...
A more formal space.
More formal, yeah.
And the other was about how we, geez, I've forgotten.
Yeah, but the thing too is, at the beginning of the meeting, when we do go to public speak, it has to be set right then and there.
Right.
Because everybody knows that when you get a packed house, so to speak, that someone from over here is gonna out-speak the person that's actually, was called on to speak, and someone will interrupt them.
Right.
Well, that's the chairs, I mean, that's the chairs' role.
It's hard to control that at some time other than at the beginning. And even, I've been at meetings even when the chair would say, "We want this person, let this person speak before the next time, and please don't interrupt." And then all of a sudden, the interruptions start, and it doesn't seem to stop.
Well, there's one thing that I mentioned at the last meeting, the second one that I've forgotten, just remembering again what it was, is that, and this only refers to the beginning period, you know, when you're letting people speak on issues that aren't, so where it's kind of dangerous for you to get derailed. You said, I think, that when the city council takes those comments...
They don't respond.
They stonewall.
Right, right.
Thank you, and then let them have their say. When they're done, "Thank you for saying that," and then go...
Right, because that protects you under open meeting law.
Yeah, that's your meeting law.
Because if you start getting into a back-and-forth discussion, deliberation on something that's not on the agenda, you're treading on sketchy ground.
Those are things I think we need to take...
That's just an open meeting law rule.
At the city council chair, actually, I went to the last city council meeting, and he actually, like, said that.
Right.
"We have public speak, we can't respond to you because of open meeting law." It was actually some of the people from the Four Hill neighborhood that can't...
Which we, which was at that meeting that I missed, right? But I mean, I can't remember the last time before that that we had somebody speak to something that wasn't on the agenda.
But I think it's good. It's just good practice, and that should be the same practice for this board as well.
Shall we recognize a member of the public here to speak about this? I'll give you 30 seconds, sir.
If you put a podium over where the waste desk is, it might take care of the problem.
You know, the podium is an interesting idea because I think that is actually what helps upstairs more than anything, is that you literally have to physically recognize a speaker.
You're on stage in front of everyone, instead of hiding in the back.
I don't know, I mean, logistically, if you're thinking about, for example, that huge group of people at the Four Hill Brewery, it's going to add significant time, but it may not be a bad idea.
Right.
I mean, the problem is, when it's a smaller group, you don't necessarily have the same concern where you need the podium, but...
I have to be honest, and I know there's conflicts, but I personally think that we need to move this operation up, and it might mean picking a different time, I don't know what. But I think that that part of it, you know, we're a legitimate authority, and I think that we're going to get more of these conflicts, more people coming in, and we'll do our best as chairs and future chairs, well, I'm sure. But I think we make the job easier by being in a professional environment. You know, if I had my troubles, we'd be upstairs.
When people are called upon, rather than sitting down, we should ask them to stand.
It's also challenging, yeah.
Like a podium, because even today, even though these people were here and they're with their towels, towers, other than the person in the corner, I don't think one of them stood up to say anything. Stood up and actually talked to us. They were all sitting in their chairs.
Well, it's difficult too, if they come up here sometimes to point out things, the camera won't necessarily catch it all, and the audience will only see their backside.
You could do that with members of the public. You could ask for them to stand.
Right, right.
I think that at the very least, that would be helpful. And, you know, I think when you have a petitioner sitting up here, like you said, with their back to people, if it's a contentious issue, it creates like a really weird dynamic that I think you have.
I noticed that with the Four Hill Brewery.
Yeah.
They were badgering him from the back.
They were badgering, right? He was hitting it from the backside.
Yeah, that was a bad design on our part.
How hard is it to get that room upstairs?
Or better yet, make it happen, number one.
Well, I would just need to check in with Barbara about what days and times. This day and time doesn't work because the school committee uses this space at the same time. So, we would have to think about changing our meeting day. And I don't know what other, I mean, I know council is up there on Wednesdays, on the second and fourth Wednesdays, so maybe it's the first and third Wednesdays. Like, I would just need to sit down with Barbara, and I can come back and give you some, if that's what you wanna do. I mean, it's fine. I think it's, I think it definitely changes the dynamic. Today, the room felt a little crowded. Generally, it doesn't. So, it's, you know, so we have...